Good evening, everyone. We're going to get started at 7 o'clock. Welcome to the December regular meeting of the Hoboken Board of Education. Mr. Moffett, will you read the Statement of Compliance, please?
Yes, sir. This meeting is being held in conformity to the Open Publics Meeting Act. Proper public notice of this meeting was published in local papers on December 9, 2017, and December 10, 2017. If any board member or member of the public in attendance believes that this meeting is in violation of the Open Publics Meeting Act, the Hoboken Board of Education requests that they make a statement at this time. The Board wishes to make those in attendance aware that this meeting is being recorded on video and will be broadcast by the Board at a later date on cable television Channel 77 and Fios Channel 46. The full meeting recording will also be made available on Board Docs, which can be accessed through our district homepage. The Hoboken Board of Education is committed to preserving the decorum of the public process and is mindful that we live in the electronic age of computers, cell phones, and other communication devices. Nevertheless, we respectfully request that all meeting participants kindly silence electronic devices during the course of the meeting, and if use of the device is necessary, we ask that you please leave the meeting room if you need to conduct personal business.
Thank you. And now it's time for the Pledge of Allegiance, and I have a volunteer to lead us tonight.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. And, Mr. Moffett, the roll call.
Yes, sir. Ms. Angley.
Here.
Mr. Biancamano.
Present.
Ms. Delara.
Here.
Ms. Evans.
Here.
Ms. Sobolov.
Here.
And Mr. Clubfeld.
Here. Oops, sorry. That is a quorum. The meeting can proceed. Student recognitions always come first, so, Mr. Fitzhugh.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Our Brand School Student of the Month recipient, Thomas Hodge.
Good evening. How are you? Good? All right. Nominated by Ms. Mangione due to his overall academic achievement and for his resilience and grit in all endeavors. Thomas is the quintessential Brand buddy. He is thoughtful and kind. He is always willing to lend a hand, and that makes him a natural leader. He has great wit and always finds some positive in all moments. He makes our school a better place. He comes to school every day with a positive attitude and works hard in every content area. We are lucky to have him in our school. This is from Ms. Mangione and Mrs. Rodriguez Gomez. Student achievements: He's a scholar-athlete who, according to Thomas, is just good at both things. That's awesome. What makes a student an asset? He is kind, respectful, funny, and well-rounded. He serves as a model to many other students, both younger and older. Thomas shared that he likes both Pokemon and Beyblades. These are cartoons. He likes that our school has three floors and the adults here make him feel comfortable. He is happy to share that he has many friends in his class and in other classes as well. He also wants us to know that his mom and dad are pretty cool. Student quote: Thomas states, "When he grows up, I want to be a baker, a scientist, and an artist. I will bake cakes and make macaroons. I will continue to do many experiments, and I will paint beautiful rainbows." At this time, let's give Thomas a round of applause for obtaining this honor. The Student of the Month recipient from Calabro School, Skylar Delafave, grade kindergarten. Hi, Skylar. How are you?
Excited.
Skylar began kindergarten at Calabro with a positive attitude and a smile on her face. She comes to school each day and eager to learn. In school, Skylar likes to listen to stories, and she loves science class with Ms. Veruque. When she grows up, she would like to be a doctor. Her favorite thing to do at home is play Go Fish with her brother, Thomas. Skylar is cooperative and a well-behaved student. She always puts 100% effort into her class and likes to help others with their work. Skylar is a role model student and a pleasure to have at Calabro Elementary School. Dr. Vespiani quotes, "When I visit the kindergarten classroom, Skylar can always be observed, engaged in her work, and cooperative with her peers. She enters the school each day ready to learn and has been a great addition to our Calabro family. Skylar shared with the Calabro family that she loves school and all the friends that she has made. At this time, let's give Skylar a round of applause for receiving this honor." The Thomas G. Connors Elementary School Student of the Month for November, Javion Henderson, Mrs. Toledo nominated Javion for Student of the Month. He demonstrates effort in all of his subjects and has great attendance. During small group instruction, Javion is able to follow directions and participates in all activities. Javion enjoys football and plays on a local team. Football is his favorite sport and tends to be the first topic he enjoys talking about. Javion supports the Patriots. Ah, ah. It's okay, Javion. Javion supports the Patriots. He also enjoys educational games. He likes beat the brain, classroom timer, while doing math drills and practice. He also likes when the class battles a deck of flashcards and reads and identifies high-frequency words. Javion does very well brainstorming ideas for creative writing and understands the writing process quite well. Javion has a lot of potential. According to your principal, Dr. Pollens, Javion has grown a lot since he first started at Connors. He shows leadership skills and is making all the right choices so that he can be successful. He was one of only two 4th grade students involved, I'm sorry, invited, rather, to participate in a leadership brunch that was hosted by, or hosted for, the 5th and 6th grade boys. When Dr. Pollens thinks of Javion, she thinks of the following quote: "Excellence is not a skill, it is an attitude." Javion has been demonstrating his excellence through his attitude, and we are proud to have him as a student at Connors Elementary. Congratulations, Javion. The Wallace Student of the Month for the month of November, 6th grade student Kendall Wallace School is proud to recognize Ms. Kendall McDonough, a 6th grade student in Ms. Tagleary's homeroom, as Student of the Month for November 2017. Mrs. Tagleary nominated Kendall for this honor because of her meticulous work and effort during her English Language Arts lessons, the yearbook committee, and her overall wonderful disposition. Kendall has the busiest schedule and handles it like a true professional, a testament to her being recently elected as the Wallace School Student Council President. That is pretty awesome. Additionally, she is an excellent speaker and communicator who assumed the responsibility of reading the morning announcements each day over the school's public address system. When you hear Kendall's voice in the morning, you know the school is underway. Principal Shannon said, "Kendall is so very deserving of this award to represent our Wallace family. She continually gives all she has to give, no matter what she's doing in the service of our school." Mrs. Tagleary went on to say, "Kendall is very determined, young lady that will no doubt be famous someday." Hmm, all right. In addition to her duties as the Student Council President, Kendall earned honor roll nine times, was selected to participate in the Model UN last year, was honored as Grade Level Student of the Month several times, and contributes to the yearbook as a photographer. She loves gymnastics, aspires to open her own studio someday. She also enjoys singing, dancing, both of which tie into her true love of performing for the theater. Although she loves to read a variety of literature, her favorite subject is mathematics. Kendall is torn between her love for theater and her love for education. She aspires to become either a speech therapist or an actress, with the goal of attending an Ivy League university to accomplish her goals. Kendall has an awesome relationship with her younger sister and plays with her all the time. Kendall is a delight to have in class, states Ms. Tagleary. I am so proud of all that she has accomplished so far. She is such an asset to the classroom, the student body, and the Hoboken community. The advice President McDonough has for her fellow students is, "When you fall, get back up again." Congratulations, Kendall, for receiving this honor. The Hoboken Middle School Student of the Month, grade 8 student, Leo Papanepito. Leo is recommended by his mathematics teacher, Ms. Ari. Leo is nominated because of his academic achievement, attendance, stewardship, cooperation, leadership, outstanding attitude, citizenship, and empathy towards others. Leo is a model student for his peers. He is responsible, mature, and dedicated to his learning. All students strive to model Leo's leadership characteristics. Ms. Ari used the following quote to describe Leo: "Do the right thing even when no one is looking." His principal, Dr. Davis, used the following quote to describe Leo: "Peace begins with a smile." Dr. Davis had several opportunities to observe him in different settings throughout the school day. She noticed the impact of Leo's smile. Its peaceful and with its calm demeanor brightens your day. Leo's past and present accomplishments include being a part of the gifted and talented program since 4th grade and has worked hard to maintain honor-level grades. He is currently working with Ms. Ari and Ms. Falcone on the middle school yearbook and on the graphic design side. Leo is an asset to the Hoboken Middle School community. He is kind, responsible, and respectful to his peers as well as his teachers. He is a hard worker as well as dedicated, which is evident in his grades. He always puts his best foot forward and always does so without a complaint. His personal hobbies include piano, yearbook, and reading. His favorite subject is mathematics. His music interest is Imagine Dragons. His college choice is Massachusetts Institute of Technology, MIT. He would also like to become an architect as career choice. When asked about a quote which describes his school, Leo stated, "It's a great place to learn." Hoboken Middle School is so proud of Leo and his accomplishments. He exhibits the true essence of a Hoboken Middle School Tiger Pride student: perseverance, respect, integrity, dedication, and excellence. Congratulations, Leo. The Hoboken High School Student of the Month, Brianna Cortez, grade 11. Ms. Roy states, "Brianna's diligence in maintaining her academic standing in every subject is outstanding, as well as her outstanding behavior and willingness to share her gift of mathematics with other students. She is always readily available to help out other students in our Algebra II class who are struggling to understand the lesson." Brianna maintains a very positive attitude. She volunteers to share her steps and solutions with the class that explains in a way that others will understand easily. She is very respectful and considerate of both teachers and students. Furthermore, she always adheres to our school rules and policies, such as reporting to classes on time as well as in uniform. Awesome. Ms. Buno states, "Brianna is exemplary red wing but an overall good person. She is active in school functions and is always willing to lend a hand. Brianna is a leader in our junior class." Brianna is a member of the lacrosse and bowling teams, National Honor Society, and yearbook. Brianna's hobbies include babysitting and drawing. She loves to hang out with friends and go bowling. Principal Pika Pietra states, "When I think of Brianna, I think of a quiet and reserved young lady. Really, she's a powerhouse and an excellent student who contributes to our school community. She speaks through her service to her school. I have come to know her more as a junior. I am confident that Brianna will continue to excel at Hoboken High School and then university and continue to contribute through her wonderful and kind acts." Brianna's post-secondary plans include applying to St. Peter's University and New Jersey City University to major in nursing or the pre-medical program. When notified about the award, Brianna said, "I'm shocked." Brianna would also like to thank her mom as well as her teachers. At this time, let's give Brianna the round of applause on obtaining this honor.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Fitzhugh. We're going to continue with a couple of more recognitions. Dr. Johnson will head that discussion.
Good evening. So as we follow the student recognitions, we have a few other recognitions this evening. Each month, as we talked about at the last meeting, we decided that we were also going to extend Student of the Month recognition to our staff members. There are many very positive things that are going on in our schools, and we thought that it would be a great way to celebrate those accomplishments and the connections that our staff members make with students. So this evening, I have two staff members with us that have been nominated by administrators throughout the district and also some verbal and also written contributions by fellow staff members. So this evening, I'm going to start with Mrs. Kristy Hunt-Gaudio, so if she can come Kristy Hunt-Gaudio comes to us from North Carolina. She joined our staff at the Wallace School in September of 2016. Mrs. Gaudio is an ELA response-to-intervention teacher, and she also serves as the Coordinator of Services in both ELA and Math RTI services. This is a program that provides both math and language arts literacy instruction to students that possess some skills for agility in both of those areas. As a teacher, Ms. Gaudio's years of experience providing specialized reading instruction in both Georgia and North Carolina have given her the skills that are necessary to differentiate and tailor her instruction to meet the needs of her students. Mrs. Gaudio is a master teacher. She possesses the sound pedagogical toolbox that's needed to reach each and every one of her students. Mrs. Gaudio's students will often say, "During her lessons, my brain hurts. I really have to think," but she always ends the lesson with a song, and it helps me understand why she pushes me to improve. Recently, a child in Mrs. Gaudio's reading group said, "She really loves us. I feel it every time she gives me a high five." Mrs. Gaudio is not only a specialized and highly-trained reading teacher and consultant, she is also a teacher of ESL. This year, Mrs. Gaudio has been asked to provide services to children with English as a second language, and she has embraced that assignment with the same zeal and excitement that she always displays. As coordinator of RTI services for the Hoboken School District, Mrs. Gaudio provides her small cadre of teachers as well as classroom teachers district-wide with useful resources and materials to improve their instructional practice and student learning. She is organized, and she is responsive to all stakeholder needs. Mrs. Gaudio's colleagues reach out to her consistently for guidance and for modeling. She provides job-embedded professional development across the district in elementary classrooms for teachers on topics such as guided reading and also literature circles. Although Mrs. Gaudio is based in the Wallace School, it's typical to see her in classrooms across the district. In fact, Mrs. Gaudio created a new guided reading and conference log system, and these documents are used in each of our schools district-wide. The logs provide teachers with the ability to monitor students' progress more efficiently and to make recommendations for improvement. For the past few months, Mrs. Gaudio has worked closely with Mr. Fitzhugh, who seems to have become her mentor of sorts. Together, they have redesigned the RTI program. He claims that she is a consummate professional and deeply understands both program and curriculum design. This evening, the Hoboken School District is proud to honor Mrs. Kristy Gaudio for her expertise, love of children, and dedication to the district. All right, so we have one more staff member that we're actually going to honor and recognize this evening, and that staff member is Mr. Christopher Munoz. Mr. Munoz has served the Hoboken Public School District for 13 years. He is a social studies teacher, and he also teaches special education classes as a dual-certified educator. Mr. Munoz's influence extends far beyond the classroom at Hoboken High School, and that is the reason why he's being recognized this evening. As an advisor for the Hoboken High School Hispanic Club, Mr. Munoz has helped to facilitate fundraisers for the American Heart Association, the Lupus Foundation, the Donate for Life New Jersey Cause, and most recently for Puerto Rico's hurricane victims. Mr. Munoz does not only organize events, he works tirelessly with students, planning, advertising, and hosting the events so that students can see their efforts from start to finish. Over the past few years, Mr. Munoz has also taken recommendations from students and helped turn those recommendations into learning experiences. In fact, various students have led efforts for the Hoboken Homeless Shelter, Choice for Tots, and for the Hoboken University Medical Center, and Mr. Munoz has been instrumental in all of those activities. Civic participation and contributions are near and dear to Mr. Munoz's heart. His Hispanic Culture Club hosts annual voter registration drives, and they also present student workshops. Annually, the club hosts a Hall of Fame induction ceremony to honor those who have contributed to Hoboken High School and to the community at large in such a way that honors not only the vision and mission of both but also the Hispanic culture. When we ask students about Mr. Munoz, they will say, "He is all over Hoboken High School." Whether it is helping them produce video documentaries, helping them with seeing the value in helping others, or always being present at events, Mr. Munoz's heart and soul is that of a red wing. This year, I am personally proud of Mr. Munoz's willingness to take a leadership role as Hoboken High School's inspired classroom facilitator. Mr. Munoz organizes a host of online distance-learning experiences for students who are participating in a number of challenges that are associated with biodiversity, sustainable architecture, worldwide poverty and inequality, and climate change. The high school principal, Ms. Pika Pietra, shared that Mr. Munoz's involvement in organizing lunchbox lectures that are designated to expose our students to professionals and experts in a host of fields has also been extremely instrumental in the growth of the high school. This evening, the Hoboken Public School District is proud to honor Mr. Christopher Munoz for his dedication to our students, his commitment, and his passion to Hoboken High School.
Wow, thank you for this tremendous honor. I'd like to thank Superintendent Johnson and Assistant Superintendent Fitzhugh, and of course, it's easy to do things with the kids when you have a leader like Ms. Pika Pietra behind you, supporting you all the way, so I just want to publicly acknowledge her and say thank you. Every crazy idea that kind of comes through my head that I want to do with the kids, she's always there to encourage me and say, "Run with it," and she really provides us with an environment at the high school where we can flourish as teachers, so, thank you very much. You know, I wouldn't be here without my colleagues who really support me every day and my students. I love getting up and coming here every day, and that's what it's all about, and I just, I love Hoboken, and I plan to be here for many years to come, so I hope you don't get tired of me too quickly, okay? Thank you very much for this honor. I appreciate it, thank you. Also, I knew I was coming here tonight. I didn't know for what, so thank you very much, but I knew I was coming here. The Hispanic Culture Club actually sent Feliz Navidad cards to every board member, so I just want to drop it off to you guys, okay? So, Feliz Navidad and happy holidays, everybody. Thank you.
I wrote something, so I would stay focused. It is an incredible honor for me to be recognized this evening by my administrators and the Board. I truly can't say thank you enough for this recognition, but more importantly, I would like to take the opportunity to thank you for trusting me with the lies of the children of Hoboken Public School District, the children of this district. My students. It gets very easy for me to get up each day and give them my all. They're the reason I want to go above and beyond and believe wholeheartedly that they deserve nothing less than this. I look forward to continuing to serve in this outstanding school district. Thank you very much.
Well, congratulations to our students and special congratulations to our teachers this evening. We're going to take a quick little recess. Families of the students want to head home before we get down to the business of the rest of the meeting. We'll take a two-minute recess, thank you. Next order of business are the reports to the Board. Dr. Johnson, do you have a report tonight?
The Staff.
Mr. Moffett, you have?
Yes, I have two items. First, there was an acknowledgement that I am in receipt of the official election results as published by the Clerk of Hudson County. So they'll be available on the website, but they do confirm that the three individuals that have received the majority of votes were Sharon Angley, Chatali Kana, and Melanie Takirian. So if anyone has some questions or wants to see the exact vote, again, it's confirmed what's already been covered in the newspaper. This will be part of my report that's published tomorrow, so feel free to also ask questions tonight if you catch me after the meeting as well. That's the first item. The second item has to do with an amendment on a resolution. It is Resolution 10.11, and it's the list of our next calendar year meeting dates. I just wanted to make correction or really a consolidation. For May 8 is actually going to be a combined meeting, which is, right now, will be, the topics will be an adopted budget and a regular meeting, so that'll be held on May 8. So I will be making that amendment to that resolution. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. Moffett. That would get us to committee reports. First one would be Communications. Ms. Delara, do you have anything?
Yes. The Communications Committee met on December 6 at 2:30. In attendance were myself, Ms. Sobolov, Ms. Evans, and Mr. Clubfeld. The committee discussed the following items. The Hoboken High School students and our 8th grade middle school students will participate in a district Red Wings for in a district Red Wings for a day. During this event, the Hoboken High School staff and students will visit Hoboken Middle School and meet with the eighth grade class. During this visit, our future Red Wings learned about new academic programs, athletic teams, our award-winning theater program, and many clubs and opportunities offered at Hoboken High School. In addition to the weekly principal letters, each school submitted their first edition of the quarterly school newsletter. The purpose of these newsletters is for families to find more in-depth information about what's been happening inside of your classrooms. And the last item is that our coffee with the principals has begun in each school, the dates and times are to be published in the upcoming weeks. Thank you, that concludes my report.
Thank you. Ms. Sobolov, the curriculum athletics?
Yes, the curriculum committee met on December 6 at 1 o'clock. In attendance was Dr. Johnson, Mr. Klubfeld, Ms. Evans, Ms. Delara, and myself. There were no items on the agenda for discussion, but the committee discussed the following new or continuing efforts in the district. We discussed the high school curriculum modifications. Hoboken High currently offers three Project Lead the Way pathways, which is engineering, biomedical, and computer science. And each pathway has a set courses starting in the freshman year to enable the student to graduate with that particular concentration. So the district already has strong participation in the Project Lead the Way, about 90 students in the ninth and 10th grade, however, to provide all students access to these rigorous courses and increase the student options moving forward to enroll in Project Lead the Way if they want to. Next year's mandatory core math and science offerings will include the required Project Lead the Way freshman courses, which is Principles of Biomedical Science, Intro to Engineering, and Computer Science Essentials. This will also strengthen the connection between the district's K-5 Project Lead the Way and six through eight. The district currently has 100% participation in the K-5 program and is one of the very few districts in the nation that offers this project-based STEM curriculum, K-12. There will also be a change to the science scope and sequence next year. The district will join many others in the nationwide movement to offer physics first. By offering physics first in the freshman year along with Principles of Biomedical Sciences allows for greater flexibility in scheduling and in the subsequent sciences and labs, and provides for a strong foundation and access to a greater variety of AP courses. The district currently offers 22 AP courses. We discussed the governor's schools, which is a tuition-free, three-to-four-week summer residential program for high-achieving high school seniors who have an interest in STEM subjects. There are two, one, Science at Drew, and one, Engineering and Technology at Rutgers. The programs are open to students from diverse economic backgrounds who have completed their junior year, and based on size, Hoboken High would be eligible for one spot per program. Applications are very competitive, and the Hoboken High students are currently preparing their applications. We discussed college applications, which at Hoboken High have already reached the 60% mark, which is a typical high school trajectory about this time of the year, and the anticipated goal is 95%. Students have already earned $3 million on RaiseMe.com, which is an online scholarship program, and have already, have 5.5 million in merit scholarships from individual colleges. It's expected that the students will surpass next year's total. Hoboken High School's application was accepted to become an AP Capstone school. An AP Capstone is an innovative diploma program that includes two unique course sequences. One is the AP Seminar, and the other is the AP Research, which culminates in a 5,000-word thesis. The students typically take the seminar in 10th or 11th grade, followed by the AP Research, and those who complete the seminar and the research and four additional AP courses of their choosing receive the AP Capstone diploma. Hoboken High School, the Hoboken Public School District is currently applying for designation as a Future Ready School. The Future Ready School is a certification program designed to promote digital learning readiness in schools throughout New Jersey. It's a partnership with the NJ DOE, the New Jersey School Boards, and NJIT. It helps promote, helps schools promote skills, abilities, and capabilities essential for college career and decision in the digital age. To receive the designation, schools must provide evidence of meeting a certain criteria in a few areas, to name a few, network, the network, hardware, community partnerships, budget and resources, curriculum, and instruction. Last month, we mentioned the IGNITE program, so the district is participating in the UN 2030 Sustainable Development Educational Goal to ensure inclusive and quality education for all and promoting lifelong learning. To this end, the district will participate in IGNITE, which is engaging humanity through education with international coaching and the AIE SEC Global Volunteers Project. To update that, 10 administrative staff will participate in six sessions of leadership coaching, and the global volunteer process is ongoing. The volunteers are students of colleges around the world, around the globe, so discussions are underway to find a good match in terms of projects and availability. Potentially, the district could have some volunteers by early summer. And then finally, the committee discussed the possibility of participating in the International Education F1 Inbound Student Program. Other districts who have participated in this program have welcomed students from 29 different countries, providing their local students with a unique learning experience. The international students are integrated into the local schools, they learn together, they learn from each other, and often make lifelong friends. Participating students would specifically choose Hoboken High for one year and must participate in an extensive application process, including an interview. School districts under no obligation to accept all students and can choose a number of students accepted each year. International students pay tuition to the local district, and all other needs, like room and board, are coordinated by the students' parents and the international agency. This discussion will continue because the application process is ongoing for two years. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Angley, you have finance?
Bear with me, I'm not feeling great. The finance committee met on Tuesday, December 6 at 6:30. In attendance were Dr. Johnson, Mr. Moffett, Mr. Klubfeld, Mr. Biancomano, Mr. McNamara, and myself. The committee reviewed all agenda items and recommends all for board approval. I just wanted to point out, we had a donation, thank you to Aileen Wagner for her donation to Brandt. The committee also discussed the food service program. Our revenues were $6,000 for the month of October, which is up from last year at this time. The auditors will be in to present the 2016-2017 audit in January. They'll first meet with the finance committee and then present to the full board. That's it.
Thank you. Ms. Evans?
The governance and personnel committee met on December 7 at 6 o'clock. In attendance were Irene Sobolov, Tom Klubfeld, Superintendent Johnson, and myself. We reviewed all items on the agenda under governance and personnel and recommend all for approval. We do have under item 9.01, two retirements on the agenda, Mr. Anthony Kemp and Ms. Frances Canino. We'd like to thank them both for their service to the district and wish them all the best as they move on to retirement. Item 9.14, we have a few assemblies and presentations going on in the schools. At Calabro School, Ms. Jacqueline Lopresti will be reading from her new book, To Kindergartners Through Third Graders. At Wallace School, the Lincoln Leopards Jump Rope Team will be kicking off the Jump for Hearts fundraising event with a performance, this is for grades three to six. And Ms. Elizabeth Holzer from ShopRite will be bringing a nutrition program to Wallace School third graders, and this is a program that they do every year, and it'll wrap up with a trip to ShopRite. And finally, Hoboken High School will again be hosting Hudson County Theater Day. Students will attend workshops led by professionals in the theater education field, and the workshops include improvisation, playwriting, script analysis, and stage makeup. And in addition to agenda items, we followed up on our meetings about diversity and inclusion, and the superintendent presented data on our enrollment of economically disadvantaged students at the district, school, and grade levels. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. Mr. Madigan called me right before the meeting and said he's on his way from Newark, and I've sort of put his committee report last, and he asked me to do it in his stead. So at that meeting, which was last week, was Ms. Angley, myself, Ms. Sobolov, Dr. Johnson, Mr. Callagie, and Mr. Madigan. We got a report that the long-range facilities, the planning, the tomographers are at work. They've started that process, so we're looking forward to the results of that in a couple of months. Mr. Callagie invited the committee and board members for any ideas or suggestions for summer projects, that the planning for those renovations, et cetera, are starting now, that process. There was a request concerned with the recent election at Calabro School, and a letter has been sent to the city clerk about the possibility of decommissioning Calabro as a voting place, just because the facilities are very tight there, with kids in the lunchroom and the activity room being used as a polling place. No results of that discussion yet. And then finally, it's not on the agenda tonight because the discussion's ongoing, but the committee felt we were fine with it and would recommend it to the board anyway about the possibility of the mayoral swearing-in ceremony being held at the high school auditorium on January 1. Struck the committee, I think, were universal in feeling that was a nice opportunity to bring the public, not just the school community, but the public into the high school, and put on a good show there for the public. And that concludes that report. And now, I have a couple of things, as the president report, some things. On the board agenda tonight is approval of next year's meeting schedule. And one thing that I am pushing for and discuss in the governance committee is that on the, at the February and March meeting, we actually start those meetings about an hour earlier to do some board training. I've talked to the representative, our field service rep from the New Jersey School Boards Association, and it felt like a good thing with some new board members coming on beginning of the year to just develop some good habits and learn some roles of board members and roles of superintendents, all that good stuff. So board members, just make a note of that, you'll certainly get noticed later on. We had received a week ago Friday, a letter from Board Member Brittany Montgomery, who's not here tonight, we received her letter of resignation. She has asked Peter to read a statement, which we...
Thank you.
Please do now, thank you.
Excuse me. "To the community of Hoboken, I was recently asked to undertake a new role with my employer that would require me to travel extensively throughout the year. I originally hoped to fulfill these new professional responsibilities while continuing to serve on the Hoboken School Board, but over the past several weeks, it has become clear that I would be unable to contribute to the board in the manner it requires, and more importantly, the manner it deserves. It has been a true honor to work on behalf of the families of Hoboken. I am proud of all we have accomplished in the past two years. I have no doubt the board will continue these successes under the leadership of the trustees and Superintendent Johnson. I will always hold the district in the highest regard and be forever thankful for the opportunity to serve the children, parents, teachers, and community of Hoboken. Most sincerely, Brittany Montgomery." Personally speaking, I think it was great to have an educator be a board member in the last two years, and I commend her for her service and for moving on in her, as a trustee, so DC can be filled properly. Back to you, Tom.
Upon receiving that letter, the notification, I checked the bylaws and put into place the process by which we fill that vacancy. Public notice has appeared in the local newspaper already, and is on our website and also two other newspapers of record. Applicants are asked to submit either a resume and/or letter expressing their interest in the position by December 20. That's right before the holiday break. The idea being that as soon as we come back at reorganization, those resumes can be distributed to the board members for review, and then we'll vote possibly, interview candidates and vote, hopefully at the January 16 meeting. I did look at the bylaws and figured out that process, which we implemented, but apparently I missed something, and Vito just told me.
So as a point of order, board members, it's my respectful recommendation that you vote to both accept the letter of resignation read by Mr. Biancomano and to ratify the process for filling the vacancy as set forth in the public notices that have been posted. Obviously, this happened between board meetings, you didn't have an opportunity to do it. Everything that the president just described is consistent with your bylaws, but board action should ratify what has occurred. So specifically speaking, I would recommend a motion to accept the letter of resignation and to ratify the process for filling the vacancy as articulated by the president and set forth in your public notice.
I'm sorry, what? No, no, he just brought it to our attention now. I would move then that we vote to accept the letter of resignation from Ms. Montgomery and then ratify the process set in motion that is prescribed by our bylaws. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Just a quick question, does there need to be public comment before we vote on an agenda item?
No.
Okay.
That's your practice, but that's not required by law.
Do you accept a resignation?
Make a statement addressed to the board.
My name is Lee Peiser, 3611 Park Avenue. The question I have before you is about procedure, as you were bringing up, is it not, are we doing this vote to accept how it's written in the newspapers to obfuscate going to the next closest voter who ran in the election, who got the most votes? So the next person would be Peter, and then after that would be Ms. Waiters. So my question is, what are the election laws, and how do they relate to your board and bylaws, and is this being done to obfuscate that? That's my question.
So your question is, am I recommending that my client follow its own bylaws to violate the election laws? That's my, is your question?
No.
That's what it sounded like, but let me be clear.
Yeah.
The process by which you fill a vacancy is set forth in statute, and the board's bylaws and this process are consistent with, not contrary to, the statute. The board does not have to do what it's doing here, it's consistent with its bylaws, the board could draw names out of a hat, the board could pick someone off the street, the board has an extraordinary amount of discretion in filling the vacancy, as long as the person's a resident of Hoboken and otherwise eligible to serve.
But it has nothing to do with the election that just took place and the amount of votes that somebody got.
That is correct, sir. That's found neither in statute nor case law nor the board's bylaws.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
And there's no other discussion? Mr. Moffett, you call the roll?
Call. Ms. Angley?
Yes.
Mr. Biancomano?
Aye.
Ms. Delara?
Yes.
Ms. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Madigan?
Yes.
Ms. Sobolov?
Yes.
And Mr. Klubfeld?
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. One other thing, at the reorganization meeting in January, it's going to be my recommendation, we discussed it in the communications committee, that with so many new, I mean, that ad hoc committee has kind of done its job for the time being. The website's been improved, also some new social media is active, other, you know, school communication initiatives are underway, so that the committee, which would comprise different members perhaps, turn into a sort of a wellness and food services ad hoc committee. So we'll make that recommendation, I think, in January. Finally, also, in addition to Ms. Montgomery's resignation, Mr. McNamara was unable to be here tonight, but this also is his final meeting. He filled in, was appointed to fill the position of Monica Stromwall about a year ago, and so I'd just like to recognize his service. And we'll talk about Peter at the end of the meeting, if you don't mind, okay?
That's fine.
That concludes my report. Any board member comments or questions about the committee reports? Any board member comments or questions about the committee reports? Then we will move on to comments on agenda items only. Mr. Moffat?
First one is Ms. Waiters.
Ms. Waiters, it is good to see you. Welcome.
Oh, thank you.
I'm going to keep time in...
You want my donut? I'm sorry, Pat Waiters.
Ms. Waiters, I'm going to keep time at the one-minute mark, when there's one minute left open, just quietly put my finger up, all right?
Oh, all right.
You have five minutes.
The one that you added to the agenda, I have here, I took this out of Saturday's paper for the Hoboken Board of Education trustee vacant position. This is for people in TV land watching too, yeah. I took that, oh, good, I'm glad you're on top of that. I took this out of the paper, and I just wanted to bring it to the attention of people watching this, that this is the third time that a seat became vacant, and I applied each and every time, or fourth time, because some of you guys wasn't here when I applied the first time, when Ms. Soboloff got appointed to the board. It was, a seat became vacant, and somebody stepped down. I like what the last speaker just spoke about. I think only with all fairness for the people that live here, when they go out and vote, especially this close to an election, Peter very well was the next go-getter, and then I was behind Peter. I think getting 2,000 people, for myself, I don't know about Peter's, but 2,072 people made it loud and clear that we want Pat Waiters. That's without me campaigning, I've been sick without me campaigning, knocking on those doors, spinning those flyers, and not having two high-power mayors come out to endorse me. It doesn't look good, it's not fair to the people that run and really want to do for this board. I'm at every meeting, every meeting, like 10 years straight. I don't miss a meeting, I'm very involved, I know about every agenda, every issue that's going on in this board of education and in this district, Pat Waiters know. So, it seemed like it's a little biased to me, because I can't see no other reason besides there's no African-American representation on the board, and this is keep being the question keep popping up over and over again. And I don't see, other than, what is it? I mean, a blind man can see, Stevie Wonder can see, that you need a person like Pat Waiters, okay? I will serve diligently, I will work with everybody with whatever indifference we have, but it's not fair to the African-American, the black, the brown, the Latino people that live in this city. It's just not fair. They're not being represented, they're definitely being underrepresented, and the same people that said diversity, diversity during their election, look what happened, okay? So, with this being said, I'm going to be applying, that's why I want people watching this, because I might need your support. If we got to get 2,000 signs out in front of the board of ed, the day of the interview, I'm going to apply for this again, okay? And I hope, I hope that we leave politics out. Please, leave politics out of the game. Discrimination and diversity, okay? It's too many of them, I don't want to go through all of them, I'm going to just wrap it up. I see Wallace School, Carrie Ellis, Lisa Aguilera, I don't know if I'm pronouncing her name right, but these understandings and meetings for like the transitions, the transgender students, and it's also mentioning a ordinance with the New Jersey state law against discrimination. I've been seeing a lot of discrimination taking place. I have a young lady, Ms. Witz, that's been asking this board for a year. It's been a year since she came to this microphone and asked, could we get some type of representation for the black and brown people that feel that they're being discriminated against? I don't see it on this agenda. So, this is like a smack in the face, even after the comment that was made by a board member about a transgender or gay guy that was running. It's not fair. Any type of discrimination is not allowed in our city. And we see what happened during the election, I'm wrapping it up. So, please, take discrimination really seriously, especially what we seen today on the news and going on worldwide. We don't have room for it, and we don't want our city to look embarrassed, to cause a big movement and a protest, because that's what's going to happen. This city is too small for that type of war. Please.
Thank you.
Next speaker is Mr. Lee Peiser.
Lee Peiser, 3611 Park Avenue. My question is about the diversity and inclusion discussion that's been ongoing for several months, and I know that you had a meeting, I think on December 4th maybe, to discuss the socio-economic data that is related to our children in this school district and how that might fit into a diversity and inclusion strategy. I think you mentioned or reported that you did that. Now, I have not heard anything back, and the public, I don't think, has had any sort of input other than these meetings since the data was collected. So, I'm assuming that Dr. Johnson is going to report on this tonight, and we're going to get some idea of, you know, sort of what the numbers are and where we're going with this. It's more of a question than anything else. That's all I have.
Yes, as, I can, I think I can answer that. As we did discuss the, we looked at some numbers having to do with the low-income socioeconomic factors in the district, and there's a lot of learning from that. We looked at it as a district overall, we looked at it by grades, we looked at it by schools, and still the question is, now to take that data and then put it into things like, well, what about AP classes or special, I mean, just to continue to put that information filtered down into the various levels of the analysis that we had already looked at. So, that's ongoing, and we'll probably be seeing that as a public presentation in January, but the work is ongoing, it's just a lot of data. Go ahead, Smir. That's the plan. It may not be a public presentation. There's no other public comment? Any discussion? Then we have a motion on the consent agenda.
Motion. Second.
Second from Ms. Evans.
That is amended, Mr. Chair. That is amended for 10.11.
Anybody need to pull anything? Anybody need to pull anything?
No, I just have a question.
Okay. So, it's a motion second, any discussion?
Yeah. Thank you. Dr. Johnson, 8.02, the approval of the AIESEC Cultural Exchange Volunteer Program. The backup had plenty of blanks in there, and that's probably because we have to pass it tonight for you to fill those blanks in, but I was just a little confused, and I was wondering if you can clarify, is this for the students or teachers, this program?
Okay, so the, this particular volunteer program is a volunteer program that engages collegiate honor students from different parts of the world in a four-to-six-week volunteer program. And so what happens is, they get placed in school districts throughout the United States, actually around the world, and their application reveals what they would like to participate in. So, it could be academic tutoring, it could be language development and tutoring in different areas like that, it could be summer programs, it could be, so there's a whole host of things. They go through a process. We look at where we would potentially have a need. So, for example, it's not just that we get multiple resumes, it might be something where we would say, in our summer extended school year program for special education children, we would like to engage college students from around the world who have an interest in music and dance, and then they would get placed. They're only available in certain periods of time, so it's when the, their collegiate semesters are either on break or they're in between coursework. They go through an entire vetting process through the agency, and then they go through a vetting process with us as well, as a volunteer, and their travel over is funded through the actual organization and so on and so forth.
So, just to be, these are collegiate students that are coming in to our district for the benefit of our district students in terms of tutoring and/or mentorship or anything like that?
Correct. So, it's either undergraduate or graduate students that are able to do it.
But any type of post-secondary students, right?
Correct.
And then, who will be covering the cost for this?
So, the agency covers the cost for the program. The only thing that the school district is required to do is if there is, so for example, if they are participating in a tutoring program and they potentially would need to use, for example, some technology, we would provide it while they were here. If they need supplies or anything, that we would provide for a teacher or another volunteer would be the same thing. And again, this could be something that we choose not to engage in at all, or if we choose to engage in the activity, we can. We don't, we're not obligated to take a volunteer.
Understand. All right, thank you.
Any other questions?
Just a statement, can I say? I'd just like to, I know I got here late, I'd just like to thank Ms. Frances Canino, Frank Canino, for her years of service. She was in Brandt this year, but I think she was in Connors for over maybe 28 years, I think. So, I'd like to thank her for all her years of service for the children of Hoboken and all that she's taught. I think it's her family, there were three, two other sisters that were teachers, her and two of her sisters, so I'd like to thank her for her services for that, at least.
Mr. Moffat, you want to call the roll, please?
Yes, sir. Ms. Angley?
Yes.
Mr. Biancamano?
No on the minutes, 6.01. Yes on everything else.
Ms. Delara?
Yes.
Ms. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Madigan?
Abstain on 6.01, and 10.05 abstain, everything else yes.
Ms. Soboloff?
Yes.
And Mr. Cuffell?
Just getting the number correct. I have to abstain on 10.4, and yes on everything else.
Motion passes. Public comments on agenda or non-agenda items.
First speaker listed out of four is Ms. Waiters.
Patricia Waiters, is there any way I could get copies of these racial inequality impact assessments? Is a few, like a couple of guides, I want to give to each and every board member? I'm going to leave it, I don't want to go into detail with this because it'll take up most of my time, but there's some real interesting information here, examples of racial injustice and inequalities, and just basically a little few things what's going on around the world. So, I'm going to leave these two here to Ms. McQuillan, and she can get copies, but I need this back, my originals. I hope we get started off on a great new year, and this one too, for parents and equality. A great new year because I told a few people I will come out tonight and speak on their behalf with some serious issues that's been going on in the district, which I really don't want to go into detail about right at this time, but, I'm sorry, Ms. Pick, I want to give kudos to Ms. Pick in a way, because she, I'm Ms. Pick, repeat, you know I call you Ms. Pick, Ms. Pick. Be quiet, because you're taking up my time. Ms. Pick, she do have this open-door policy, she willing to speak to people, she's there, and I don't want to go into detail, like I said, because the situation's premature, I just don't want to pay place to blame and beat up no one individual person, but these are serious allegations that I want this board to take very serious, because I don't want to take stuff like this into the new year with the new board members coming. And I don't need our school district to look the way it's looking, and I'm telling you, please listen to me, I just called one of the parents, and the teacher's home right now at their house. I need to know like little stuff like that with respect to homeschool, I didn't know a teacher could come to your house at 8 o'clock at night. It's just a lot of things that have to be addressed, and I think we need a meeting like ASAP. Please, please, educate our kids. I told you, I did it for three years in the Juvenile Detention Center from 1997 to 2003, almost, three or more years, where I used to go to school and talk to the students. Our students could relate to us, okay? And I'm not saying this so it could sound like any type of racial matter, but our students can relate to us. Everybody in the whole school called me Auntie Pat. Ms. Pick will tell you that, I'm everybody's aunt, I don't care what color you are, but I know right now it's a dying need in this district to reach out to our kids. Please, it's very important, we got to get some type of counseling, like yesterday. If we're going to continue to perform and make sure they get a duty-free education, there's no way you could tell me our kids is being educated with all of the distractions that's going on in this district. This is why Ms. Courtney kept telling you the seriousness of getting a diverse team, okay? Now, I heard Ms. Johnson talk about the students that's going to come in, the graduate students that help teach. We have three community rooms, and I could get access to those three community rooms, I could get you the space. I need this board to work with me. Open those three community rooms and reach out to our kids down in the housing authority. We'll get workers, we'll get volunteers, whatever you could do as your, Mr. President and your board, I'm begging you, we need it. We don't need to wait till another kid get bullied and be on TV getting 2,000 or 2 million hits. This is serious, ours is really happening here. Our kids are being impacted, and it's bothering me. They're not graduating, some of them, they're homeschool, I wind up seeing in jail when I go to the jail to visit my old colleagues, and it's very disturbing because they're coming out of our district. So, again, y'all have my information, if you tell me tomorrow, I'll be there tomorrow, sick and all. We need to address these serious issues with our African-American, Latino, black, and brown kids in this district. Please, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next speaker is Eileen McGurk.
Hi, I also have the throat raspiness, so I'm here tonight on behalf of the Connors PTO.
For the first record, name an address.
Eileen McGurk, 62 Patterson Avenue.
Thank you.
Here tonight on behalf of the Connors PTO. First, I wanted to say thank you, we saw many of you in the room at our November 15th Chipotle fundraiser, which raised over $700 towards Field Day for the spring. So, thank you for coming out, to everyone who came, and thank you for bringing your appetites, I think that was a lot of extra guacamole you must have all ordered. This week marks the first-ever Scholastic Book Fair at Connors. Yesterday was our preview day, and sales started this afternoon. There are times where the sale is open to the public, which is tomorrow morning from 7:45 to 8:15 a.m., and then tomorrow afternoon from 2:30 to 6:00 p.m. Friday, it'll be open from 7:45 to 9:00 a.m. There are no book fair hours on Friday. This is structured as a buy-one-get-one book fair, which means that for every book you purchase, a book of equal or lesser value will actually go to a Connors Teachers' Witch List or back into the general library. So, if you have some time, you need to do some Christmas shopping, there's a really great selection for everyone from preschool right up through, I bought a present for my mother-in-law there this afternoon, so there's a little bit of something for everyone, and every purchase goes back to help our kids. So, if you have the time, please come out, but we just wanted to make you aware of what was happening at Connors. And a big thank you to Helen Bishop, who couldn't be here tonight, she really pushed to have us get this book fair on the calendar before the holiday season. She's acting as our PTO chair, and she really did a fabulous job getting it up and running. So, thank you and happy holidays.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next speaker is Christopher Munoz.
Good evening, Christopher Munoz, Hoboken Education Association. Before I start, I'd just like to... Before I start, I'd just like to say we want to thank Francis Canino for her years of service. It's hard to lose a member of the family, but we understand that she's retiring and it's a well-deserved retirement. Trustee Madigan, the two administrators you're referring to were Ann Monaco and Linda Palumbo?
Yes.
All right, just, you know, because I know we had some trouble, we just want it sorted out, you know? I'd just like to say, before I start, you know, congratulations to the new, two new incoming board members. You know, I know it's very hard to put your name on a ballot and, you know, congratulations on coming in. And also to thank outgoing trustee Biancamano for your service to the children and the families of Hoboken. I know firsthand experience that this can sometimes be a very thankless job and you get blamed for a lot of things that you didn't do, but you always handled it with grace and style and you were actually one of our biggest supporters. So just want to say thank you for all your service, okay? I'm here actually to, on behalf of the HEA, to remind everyone or to make sure everyone knows that this coming Saturday at Hoboken High School, the HEA is sponsoring our fourth annual Hoboken Family Holiday Fund Day. It is from 10 a.m. to 2 p.m. And this is an event that is, is put on by the Hoboken Education Association Pride Committee along with the HEA itself. And what we do is we get back to the community, okay? So we have bouncy houses for the kids and breakfasts with Santa and, you know, you can meet our teachers and our administrators and find out about all the wonderful things that are happening in the Hoboken public schools. We have arts and crafts, we have everything. And I know I've seen many of you on this dais there every year and we just want to remind you that it's happening again this Saturday from 10 to 2. We hope to see everybody there. Any questions about the event? No? Okay, no, all right, well, I will save some Santa pictures for everybody here, okay? So you don't have to wait in line, you just come right up and Bruni will get you right to the front of the line. Okay? And that's it from the HEA. Just want to say happy Hanukkah, happy holidays, Merry Christmas, Happy Kwanzaa, and everyone have a joyous new year. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Last speaker listed is Courtney Wicks.
Courtney Wicks, 3611 Park Avenue. I just really wanted to touch base again on the Diversity and Inclusion Committee and really just try to get across to you how important it is and really just get you to understand that there is a real sense of urgency here. I really care about this issue. My grandparents, my grandfather, both of them grew up on plantations. My one grandfather picked cotton until he was 18 and my other grandfather worked on a different ranch in Texas. Black families up until that point hadn't left a plantation after the Civil War was over in the South. They weren't really permitted to, I think that's something historically we don't talk about. And they were able to go on, one fought in World War II and then he took on the fight in, in, in the South along with my grandmother against Jim Crow. And they did it through the education system. And they used to teach literacy on plantations because at the time, kids couldn't, they couldn't leave to go to the public school system, they weren't permitted to. And when I look at this district and I look at what's going on here and I look at how we're not taking aggressive measures to deal with things that aren't, that aren't unique to our district. Maplewood South Orange is going through the same thing. They had to file a complaint with the Department of Education, Office of Civil Rights. They have things like racial tracking, they have a segregated elementary school system. My own kid was racially tracked in Wallace. She was a high-performing student, but she was put in all the B classes, okay? I, she, that changed once she got into the middle school, but if you, even in the middle school level, if you're not in honors, you might as well just, you might as well just call it quits right now because you're not going to be college-ready. And these are the kinds of things that we are neglecting to deal with in this district. I know you look really bored, Mr. Madigan, but, you know, and I know you don't think that there's really an issue, but, but, you know, I, I, I just, here, if these kids go out in the world and they are not college and career-ready, it is, has a devastating impact, and I'm talking generational. And maybe you don't care, or maybe it's hard for you to understand the severity of this issue. And I know we're looking at socioeconomic issue, socioeconomic data and we're having these discussions behind closed doors, we're not transparent about what we're, what's going on. But I just think that's a mistake. And if you really truly care about educating every child in this district, you have to open the process up. Because even with the data, context matters. And if the only people that are presenting on the data and giving their point of view are people who don't look like me and don't look like Pat Waiters and don't look like the Latino kids in the district, you're, you're going to get a very myopic view. And so I don't, a Diversity and Inclusion Committee is meant to bring people together to examine these issues as a group collectively and collaboratively dismantle the systems that are hurting our kids, okay? And create a culturally competent and inclusive district for everyone. Because we're adding all these great programs and that's great, but we're really not dealing, we're not addressing the issues with, there are certain kids that we are completely failing in this district and we have completely left them, we're leaving them behind. And we have every excuse in the world for why, you know, it's their parents or they can't act right. But we have all of these self-fulfilling prophecies where we create two different tracks and if one track isn't getting the quality that the other track is getting, of course they're going to underperform. Of course they're not going to succeed like everyone else. So I just ask you to really take this very seriously. You don't have to like me, you don't have to, you don't have to agree with what I'm saying, but at the end of the day, if you really care about kids, you need to roll up your sleeves and you need to dig into this and you need to start caring. Because they, you're all they have. You're all they have. So if you can't get it right, then we're never going to get it right. Thank you.
Thank you.
May I respond? Ms. Wicks, I find it offensive you saying about me being bored. What I was thinking about to myself-
I didn't say you were being, oh, being bored?
Yes. Is that, well, you said I looked bored?
Well, the last meeting, you said-
You just said I was bored just now.
Yeah, you did, you did look bored.
Okay. Well, my comment is, what I was thinking of when you were looking at me and saying I was bored is, I grew up here. I was born and raised in Hoboken. I grew up in the yellow flats, applied housing. My father passed away when I was-
Here we go.
-in the third grade. No, there's no going here. Okay? I've grown up, I went to Hoboken High School, okay? You ask anyone who I graduated with, I'm not going to go into white, Spanish, colored, anything like that. But what I was thinking is, I'd be damned if my kid went through any of that stuff and I left him in that school and I didn't make a stink of what you're saying that happened to your child.
I did.
Well, I, I don't say it. I would have my child out of that school in a second. That's the kind of parent I am.
No.
That's what I'm saying. I would make sure I thought, this is my time now, this is my comment now. Please let me speak. Let me speak. I would not, as a parent, let my child be subject to that. That's what I'm saying. I would fight for my child and not come up and just accuse board members of stuff. That's what I would do here. And that's me, as a parent, what I would do. I went into the high school-
Okay, but you're not black, are you? Are you African-American? Are you a descendant of a slave? Are you a black, are you African-
Excuse me, I'm speaking-
So-
And we have control in the meeting, please. I'm speaking right now.
Well, I don't have to sit here and listen to you talk to me that way.
I'm not speaking to you, I'm speaking to the public.
Because you're not, you're, you're all twisted because I said that you were bored, right?
No, I'm telling you the truth.
Instead of listening to the overall essence.
Are you going to take control of this meeting or not? You're the president, take control. I'm speaking, I have the floor.
What are you so angry about?
I'm angry because-
What are you so angry about? Because I said you're bored?
Because you want to fight and just criticize.
Because I said you're bored?
No, because you didn't fight for your own child the way I would fight for my child.
See, this is the problem, the lack of professionalism on the board. He's going to sit up there and get upset. Now, I'm a parent, I'm a parent.
Let's get professional right now.
I'm a parent.
You've been, you've been at the podium for eight minutes.
Okay.
You're, you're, please.
Well, he wanted to address me, so, you know.
No, please.
We can't take our kids out of the district because we can't keep it this way. We can't just keep running. Where are we going to go? Where are we going to go, Mr. Madigan?
Please.
Tom, please take control as the president. If we're going to address the crowd, address it, please. I had the floor and I didn't have it. If this is the way we're going to follow procedures, then don't have the meeting. Don't make a face at me because I'm not putting up with this. I was addressed, you should have said I shouldn't have been addressed, first of all. So follow your procedures. No, my name was put out there and you should have stopped it there. Okay? I'm telling you what my feelings are. If someone did something to my child, I would stop it. I wouldn't come here and blame here.
Ms. Waiters?
I would come and make sure I was there to stop it for my child. I'm speaking about myself, okay? Before I get criticized on anything else, you have to control this meeting so it doesn't go like this, okay? Once the board's members spoke into it, it's not supposed to be, Tom.
I, I think when you look at the videotape, when she mentioned your name, I did tap the gavel and I said, please direct your conversation.
And it went against me. But, and then when I was speaking, I should have had my turn as a board member here.
Mr. Madigan, I've been banging the gavel for the past several minutes.
Okay. But, Tom, you need to have control.
You have, you have a right to make a statement.
Yes. And I was stopped on my statement. So then you, as president, have to control it. And the last two meetings, you haven't done that for, for the board's sake.
You're, you're, you're right. I, I, maybe I could have done a better job. Is there any other public comments?
That was the last speaker, sir.
There's no-
There's someone else here.
No.
Hi, I'm Kate McWeston. I live at 1025 Maxwell Lane, here representing the Hoboken Public Education Foundation. I just wanted to basically say thank you.
Could you just repeat that, please?
Lean into the microphone a little bit, I can't hear.
Can you hear me now?
There we go.
Sorry.
I'm sorry, could you just state your address so we get it right for the-
Yeah, sure. I'm from 1025 Maxwell Lane and I'm here representing the Hoboken Public Education Foundation.
Thank you.
I just wanted to thank the entire board, particularly those that are stepping down and ending their service for what they've done for the district this year. Often volunteer roles like this are very thankless and there are endless nights away from your families. I moved here just under 12 months ago and I'm internally grateful for the fantastic work of the teachers, administrators, PTO volunteers and businesses who donate products and money through the foundation to this community. Together, I think that many great things are happening and I think that we've seen an increase in community engagement and also money being raised. I know our secretary, Jackie Dadd, was here last month and presented on the amount that had been raised this year and the initiatives that will be rolled out. But I would like to report that since then, we had the Giving Tuesday campaign led by Marina Pallambini, which is on track to raise $8,000, an additional to that amount. I think that this community support, both from individuals and businesses, is testament to the many great things happening inside and outside of this class, at the classrooms and to the hard work of people rolling up their sleeves, like you all and many in this room, who may not always get along, but you're volunteering time and you're putting there, which shows that we all back the teachers and the people that are helping our children. Finally, yeah, I just wanted to wish you all a very happy holiday and thank you for everything that you do.
Thank you so much. Thank you to the foundation, too.
So, one of the things that I'd like to address, just to end the meeting, when we do, we, we may have differences of opinions at times, but I do think it's very important to discuss some of the issues that we bring up as differences. So for example, when we talk about college and career readiness, I do think it's absolutely critical to know that the district has been pushing expectations over the last couple years. And I personally am extremely proud of the fact that the college and career numbers and the percentage of kids have in fact exceeded 90% at the high school. Our kids have not only been accepted, have applied and have been accepted to college over the last two years at 90%. We are beyond the rate right now, although it was reported out, we hit the 72% and that is college and career readiness. Over $9.2 million in merit scholarships were issued to kids at Hoboken High School last year alone. Those merit scholarships are not financial aid-oriented scholarships. Those kids applied for college, they participated in instant decision days, they sat for interviews and not, over 90% of our high school kids were accepted to colleges last year. We are on the track to hit that mark, if not exceed it. I think it's important for the record to know that our kids are in fact interested in going to college. They are interested in careers outside of what might be considered a traditional career that doesn't require college education. And quite frankly, even those that are not in fact choosing to attend college are going through a college preparatory program that enables them to be ready for the workforce, the 21st century workforce. We are one of the only high schools that does not have any entrances or obstacles to advanced placement courses or project lead-the-way courses at the high school. They are open to all students who choose to participate. Our guidance staff does an incredible job encouraging and, and teaching kids about those classes. And our percentage and our numbers in terms of participation in advanced placement classes shows that. Our kids at this point, and we have been transparent about this, our kids at this point have struggled a little bit in advanced placement classes. Some of the reasons they've struggled is because we are not a school district that makes kids take entrance tests before they enter advanced placement classes and don't let them into those classes unless they hit a certain score. Our focus is to encourage them to put out the effort and if they want to try and they want to challenge themselves, we put them in those classes. And so as a result of that, our participation rate in our advanced placement program is in fact a high percentage rate. Our performance on the advanced placement tests, and we have talked about this year after year, has to improve and it will continue to improve as the teachers and the kids get more and more used to participating in high-level and rigorous courses.
Please, sorry, too late. Thank you for that clarification. I wanted to conclude this, uh-
There are no tracks at Hoboken High School. There are no tracks at Hoboken High School.
Peter, I- She's leaving. I don't have a police officer in this room. What am I supposed to do?
Just end the meeting.
Yeah. But I, I need to, I wanted to acknowledge Peter.
Oh, yes, please.
That's why I couldn't end the meeting. This is Peter's last meeting. And although, uh-
Thank you.
Yes, I know you wanted to say something.
I do, I do. And I'm going to apologize in advance, it certainly, the statement's a lot longer than the one I read from Ms. Montgomery. "I probably have not spent my early adult years like most millennials. At 18, I ran for public office for the first time and was elected to county committee, a position I still hold 14 years later. At 25, I ran to become a member of the Hoboken Board of Education, winning and becoming the youngest member ever to be elected to this board. The question I received most, why does a young, single, non-parent want to serve on a school board? It was always a simple answer to me, because my handsome self needs to be on TV." No, seriously. "It is because I love my community and helping to make our district schools become the best they can be fulfills my obligation to give back to my community, a value my parents instilled in me from an early age. As Winston Churchill once said, 'We make a living by what we get, but we make a life by what we give.'" Six and a half years volunteering for any unpaid position can be stressful, tedious endeavor, only if you- endeavor, only if you don't love what you're doing. I absolutely loved every minute being a Hoboken Board of Education trustee, and although it sometimes, all right, most times, caused more stress than my full-time jobs, it was all worth it. Dr. Johnson, I have had to work with many superintendents during my tenure, many. I can say with great ease, leaving this board, that I feel very comfortable with you at the helm. I know that you appreciated my constant questions at meetings, because you told me. I was always dissecting items on our agenda, and your thorough responses not only satisfied my questions, but they communicated to the public how the Hoboken schools are being run. This is how a relationship between a board member and a superintendent should be, honest, mutually respectful, and mindful at all times that we are answerable to the people of this community. Six years on the Board of Education, consistently voting against tax increases, updating the public on the unsightly scaffolding at Brand School, ensuring that we lowered legal costs, spearheading the new turf at Hoboken High School, and being instrumental in hiring one of the best superintendents in the States. But reflecting on my time, I feel I have best represented the concerns of the broad range of people in our community by asking the tough and thoughtful questions. I heard this many times during my years on the board, and Mr. Munoz hit on this earlier, being a board member is the most thankless job anyone could have. This is why I think it's very important we recognize all of those who are currently serving and have served on this distinguished body. We are, we all volunteer our time, time that could be spent with our families or loved ones, but we are here because we are all passionate about our beliefs. I know that I could leave with my head held high. The amount of support I've received the last few weeks is humbling and much appreciated, and there's been a lot of you to reach out to me and, and I'm so appreciative of that. The Hoboken Board of Education is filled with great teachers, administrators, and staff members, always a bragging point of mine while attending New Jersey School Boards Association meetings. Their time dedication and commitment given should be commended. With hard work, determination, and perseverance, even a deli boy could have made so many impactful decisions benefiting our community. I feel as if my service to community is not over, but certainly needs a much-needed break. When one door closes, another one opens. Thank you, thank you, thank you. Peter, we've served on the committees together, um, and you've been, uh, a diligent member of the board, I know that. I know, I know those of us up here know, know the amount of work and effort you put into it. Um, so on behalf of the board, thank you. Good luck. Thank you.
Wanted to wish you the best of luck, and I know I'll see you around, and, uh, it's been nice getting to know you on the committees that we worked on together.
Thank you, Sharon.
I'd like to say thank you for your service, Peter. I remember as when I was just a parent going to board meetings and you fighting of the legal costs and you did get them cut down with the board's help and everyone, and I know this board will make sure it stays that way as in memory of you, but I'd like to thank you a lot. I've learned from you up on this dais as a younger man, or whatever, but I'd like to say thank you for all your hard work up here for the children of Hoboken and the taxpayers. Thank you very much.
All right, motion to close?
Motion.
Second.
All the favors, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?